Good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody to our meeting tonight. This time I'd like to call the board of the board for part of the night.
Let us pray. Oh Lord, our Lord, how excellent is thy name in all the earth. Whom hath thou assessed thy glory throughout this day. We thank you for your grace, kindness, goodness, mercy and love that has been placed upon this board. It represents the people of this great county of Mecklenburg. Continue to give us wisdom as we continue to seek wisdom that aligns with your plan and the strength and the tolerance that shall make us good stewards over the broken substances that have been provided. Search the heart of man and grant grace and protection on all of our public's safety sector, as well as those in the governing body of the American people. In the name of the Father, the Son, and the God of the Holy Spirit. Amen.
This time I'd like to call this meeting over. Please stand and pledge their wishes.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This time I'll appoint a motion to approve the agenda. The matter made in discussion. All vote of motion say aye. All opposed, motion carries. Hope everyone has had a chance to look at the minutes of the August eleventh meeting. I'll appoint a motion to approve those minutes. What you've been made, all vote say aye. Opposed, and you are up next.
Yes, sir. Before I call the board of the board, I just wanted to let y'all know that in the last school year, we did a design your own iVoted sticker contest where we opened it up to all school age children in Mecklenburg County from preschool all the way through 12th grade. We had a pretty big turnout for our first years. Since it was later in the year, we had over twenty submissions. We did blind selection on it. Nobody knew who submitted the names except for me, so I was not allowed to pick anything. We went through the courts Harley Court Board, got two hundred and forty four supervisors, Commonwealth's Attorney's Office, our court's office. So we used everybody in the county actually who helped with elections. Then we put it out to the citizens of Mecklenburg County to vote, and this young lady received an overwhelming majority of the vote. Very proud. She was in the fourth grade last year. Her name is Mia Shangwolf, and my electoral board and I have written a resolution. If it's okay, I'll call her up here and read it, and we'll give her her award. Come on, Mia. Resolution of recognition, celebrating the winner of Mecklenburg County's first Design Your iVoted sticker contest. Whereas, the Mecklenburg County Electoral Board and Office of Voter Registration launched the county's first ever Design Your iVoted sticker contest, inviting creative submissions from students in elementary through middle school to promote civic engagement and voting. And whereas, the contest received over twenty original and thoughtful submissions from students across the county, showcasing the creativity and enthusiasm of our young citizens. Whereas, the Electoral Board, in collaboration with members of the Board of Supervisors, the Clerk of the Circuit Court Office, and the Commonwealth's Attorney's Office, conducted a blind review to narrow down the submissions to a group of finalists. And whereas, the final selection was made by public vote of the citizens of Mecklenburg County, reflecting the community's voice in choosing the design that best represents the spirit of voting and civic participation. And whereas, Mia Shangwolf, fourth grade student at La Crosse Elementary School, received the most votes and selected the winner of the 2025 Design Your iVoted sticker contest. And whereas, Mia's design will proudly be used on the iVoted stickers that will be distributed at polling places throughout Mecklenburg County for the upcoming election year, symbolizing the importance of civic duty and youth involvement in democracy. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Mecklenburg County Electoral Board and Office of Voter Registration formally recognize and commend Mia Shangwolf for her outstanding artwork and contribution to civic pride in Mecklenburg County. Be it further resolved that appreciation is extended to all students who participated in the contest and to the community leaders and citizens who supported and helped select the winning design. Adopted the eighth day of September 2025. This is for you, and here's your trophy with your sticker and design.
Very cool.
Just wait right there. I have a little something for you too. All right, you want me to set that down for you?
Good catch.
You might not remember me, but we met a little while ago. So Mia's mom and I met under some little difficult circumstances not long ago. But she's a very brave woman. Her daughter's a very brave young lady. And we won't go into all that. But I didn't know I was in the midst of an amazing artist at that time. But then I also saw the artwork in a meeting I was at, and I didn't know that you were the artist. So I am so very, very proud of you. And so I have a commendation from the Senate of the Commonwealth of Virginia. Here at my office, sincerest congratulations to Mia, how do you say your last name? Shane, just like it looks. Creator of the winning design for the Mecklenburg County Electoral Board iVoted sticker contest offered by Senator Tammy Grandbleed-Mulcahy on September eighth, 2025, signed by the Clerk of the Senate, Susan Clark Scharr. The Senate of Virginia is so proud of you, and I'm so proud of you, and you and your mom have the brightest future in hand. Didn't he make you cry?
It's on her trophy. I'll be sure to get Alex some for you.
Okay, I'll do that.
Our nation's got plenty of zoning, zoning lucky.
I was just gonna say, you can get the sticker beginning when? Next Friday?
September nineteenth.
September nineteenth. Mecklenburg County Board of Elections Office, and end for the forty-five days after.
Mecklenburg's office received an application from James Moody to rezone property from industrial M1 to business B1 to allow for a dog daycare business. Property is identified by county tax number one six seven zero zero dash A dash zero one one A and parcel record number four zero zero three three. This property is currently zoned as industrial M1 and is located on the east side of Sawmill Road, approximately six hundred twenty-two feet south of its intersection with Route seven two two, Notland Farm Road. It's in Election District One. And at the planning commission, this was unanimously approved, or yes, with conditions that they need, all would be, well, with the conditions, we need the conditions that were offered in the funding mission.
Anyone wishing to speak on behalf of the application?
Hello. My name is Gayley. Change for you is my grandfather. I'm working together with this dog business. He just wanted me to use part of his land. We just created a warehouse. We're looking to reason just, I think it's a half, it's about a building long. I did a thing, a sort of a building we're working with. Maybe you don't see it. It's just a little prego. We're gonna put dog owners dencing around. I had talked to the neighbors, and they're all looking with it. I've been looking to do about seven AM or six PM, so nothing too late. And we have brought quotes for the concrete for VDOT. They want us to put concrete and make a drainage ditch on top of the street. I have got quotes on that. Got quotes on the septic. We're gonna use the previous water and what it does. There might be, you know where this one is. Do you have any questions for me?
Gentlemen, if any, I have any questions? Thank you. This time we'll open the public hearing on this application. Anyone wishing to speak? Hearing number one, we will close the public hearing. The wishes of District Board.
This is Warren. Final recommendation of the planning commission. I move that we accept the application.
Okay, everyone's heard the motion. All vote say aye. Opposed, and the motion carries.
The next application is by Holly Gill and James and Fiedlerwitz for a special exception permit to allow veterinary dog and cat clinic. This property is identified as county tax number one two eight zero 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 dash A dash zero five two, parcel record number five zero one five. It was zoned residential, but it was rezoned to agriculture law in the course of July, maybe. And this was also unanimously approved by the planning commission.
Anyone wishing to speak on behalf of the application?
I do.
Please come forward.
I'm Holly Gill, and I've been a veterinarian in Virginia since nineteen eighty-three. We moved to Clarksville initially temporarily, and I started volunteering at the SPCA in Clarksville. I, they did not have any way to spay and neuter their animals. They had to actually take them out of the county to do the spay and neuter. So we opened one of their cat rooms into a surgery suite and got it licensed by the state of Virginia. And since September two thousand twenty-two, I've been, they only surgery there. I really wanted to, I mean, the number of animals, number of cats in particular, is staggering in the shelter. There's probably right now a hundred and thirty cats. I mean, we get so full that we have to turn people away. I really wanted to open, or to reach out to the community and be able to offer spay and neuter to the general public. And so I bought, my husband and I bought a little house in Boynton and had it licensed by the state of Virginia as a veterinary facility. And we got that done in June of this year. So since then, we've been working with getting the proper zone in. So hopefully, we will have it now. The business is gonna be run as a five oh one C three. It's a not-for-profit. I have to make enough money to keep the doors open, but it's not, it's not for financial benefit. The plan is to be open only three days a week. I'm retired, so I figure we'll work three days a week from about eight o'clock in the morning to three o'clock in the afternoon and admit patients. I will not be seeing clients. The, excuse me, the owners will bring their animals and then we will admit them and do surgery and then they'll take them out in the afternoon. I estimate doing about three animals, sorry, three days a week and about six animals a day, mostly cats. One cat can, one female cat can have four livers in a year. So it's not like a dog. Dog can only have two livers a year. But cats is a different one. And that means every cat could produce, every female cat twenty kids a year. And I mean, something really needs, needs to be done. And because what I want is for every animal, every dog, every cat, to have a home and have people who love them and can financially take care of them, rather than having some of the animals that is almost impossible to care for. So that's, that's what I'm wanting to do, and I hope you ask for me.
We'll now open the public hearing on this application. Anyone wishing to speak? Hearing number one, I'll close the public hearing. If there's any wish of the District Board. Mr. Tim, I'd like to make a motion that we approve this application under the recommendation of the planning commission. Everyone's heard the motion. All vote say aye. Opposed, and the motion carries. Dr. Warren, I believe you were up next.
Welcome to our house. We're so glad that you came. Mr. Jennings pulled me aside and asked me, my comments would be long, so I crossed lots of things up. Just a few comments regarding preschool activities at school opening. The staff in Mecklenburg County had an extremely busy summer preparing our school buildings for our teachers and students to arrive. Our custodians and maintenance crews polished, cleaned, and made minor and major repairs to the existing facility. Teachers, paraprofessionals, and support staff moved to Clarksville Elementary School out of the former Blue Stone High School facility and into the new Clarksville Elementary School, while the staff in Chase City moved out of their former building into the Blue Stone facility for the next two years. The Chase City Elementary School project update is that the building is currently in the hands of Blair Construction as they begin the process of a pavement and eventual demolition, except of course for the new addition that was built in 2016 and the gym. Those pieces are gonna be folded into the new construction. The gym is gonna be utilized such as it is at Clarksville and used as expansion. Right now, it's a very large space that could be utilized for indoor recess or for overflow. But if it's necessary that we have to increase the classrooms there, that's ready built, we can put five additional classrooms there. Our transportation department worked all summer compressing and realigning school bus routes. They conducted safety meetings with the drivers, prepared vehicles, and developed protocols to address the complex puzzle transporting students to and from school each day. That's really complex, because kids don't just get picked up at their house and dropped off at their house. They might be picked up at grandma's in the morning, dropped off at uncle and aunt's on Tuesdays and Thursdays, and then childcare Monday, Wednesday, Friday. It's a daunting task, and the three individuals that we have, excuse me, four individuals that we have at transportation did a really great job. We're not without mistakes. We unfortunately would have one or two kids who don't remember which bus they rode in on the morning on the first day of school, and they got into another bus. But that is usually, very quickly, we had five minutes taking care of the bus returning or a bus driver using radio to connect with the proper bus driver to get that child transported. Our instructional staff participated in two full days of professional development at the complex and the new Clarksville facility on either August fifth, sixth, and seventh. Elementary school staff and secondary staff interchased in the participation as we implemented for the first time a two-day open house on Tuesday and Wednesday before students arrived on the eleventh. And this review of this year's professional development scheme and the open house schedule, they were extremely positive. Parents really liked the opportunity of being at one school, the elementary schools, instead of having to rush across the county to get to the secondary schools if they had older children, therefore vice versa. I was really heartened to witness a great many parents and students alike who participated and were really looking forward to the new school year. Lots of smiles on the parents' faces too because their children were gonna be taken care of during the day as opposed to being at home. This year's new professional, excuse me, new teacher paraprofessional orientation took place over a three-day period, beginning with virtual presentations on the twenty-ninth of July, in-person workshop, with a football theme program on July thirty-first, thirtieth, and then a culminating event where our new personnel met with the school administration and then a new professional teacher, paraprofessional dinner sponsored by McBeep at three thirteen. On July the seventh, we had our convocation. New staff was introduced, and we recognized our educator and our rookie educator of the year. And then for the rest of the day, we had professional development, followed by our final Friday workday for our staff. On Monday, the eleventh, the opening of school was almost perfect, according to our principals and my observations as I visited each school. And I want to thank them again, including our parents for this remarkable school opening. While our first day enrollments were not official, as the Virginia Department of Education requires our enrollment figures, they submitted on September thirtieth. We had approximately a hundred students less on the first day of school, but one week later, we were up a hundred and five students. So we are probably running static the last year. We have a total of, as of August the eighteenth, and I wish I could give you today's numbers, but I'll speak about in a minute our cybersecurity incident. I can't get into our computers right now. But we had, we have approximately thirty-eight hundred and forty students at our middle, high, and elementary schools, which is still above what we projected with regard to our budget. The last comment is, although we had a wonderful start, we forgot to knock on wood, because as most of you know, our school division has been a victim of a cybersecurity incident. And while I'd love to discuss it at length, I cannot this evening because it's still a crime. It's currently under investigation by the state and federal agencies, and is being addressed by our insurance carrier, Acor. The good news is that our teacher, students, and staff have risen to the challenge by going old school with instruction and operations. The final thanks needs to go to our technology department led by Mr. Josh Jefferson, your cameraman for the evening, led by, and also on with Mr. Ron Goodman, all the ITR teams and all the other technology staff, who've been working night and day and weekends to do the dress and breakfast attack. And we're hopeful that we can come out of this unscathed. And we're all very, very happy that we had the forethought to have cybersecurity insurance with Acor, as these things can become very basic. And I'd like to also thank the Board of Supervisors for your support, and Alex, yours as well. We couldn't be where we are in these beautiful buildings and with the great support with regard to the budget for all of you. So thank you so much for what you do for our kids.
Mr. Rogers, VDOT report.
We, Chair, members of the board, tonight I'd like to present to you and give some provisions to the reports you have in the packet. This quarter of August, we received fifty-two calls from our traffic operations center. At the close of the month, we have closed forty-four of those. Those were all basically routine issues from storm damage and citizen complaints. We issued twenty-one permits during the month of August, predominantly all of those were utility work. Our rural rusty project on Haynesville Road is still ongoing. Brother committee, we will finish it by the end of the month. We have finished our second cycle of primary and secondary mowing. Brother committee will dictate when the next cycle will come. In construction, there's a few updates on that. Our P M four R pavement schedule, which is happening out there next to Paulview High Street, fifty-eight, they have gotten back on schedule. They should be finishing that up in the next few weeks. Our surface treatment schedule is complete. They're running through a few punch list items. That should be finished by the end of the month as well. Our safety improvement project during the county, currently they are working on Route nine oh three right now. That is ongoing. And our payment schedule that they started on Route six eighteen across, the payment's done, but they're working through the punch list items. That should be finished by the end of the month as well. Outside of that, if your ship focuses at the end of summer, we're looking at a winter operations, working with contractors, meeting them signed up, inventorying the assets and making sure the inspections are complete. And our crews are just working diligently doing routine maintenance throughout the county. That's all I have to report. Any questions or concerns?
Anybody have any questions? Okay, you're in.
Thank you all.
A meeting of the personnel committees was held in and for the county of Mecklenburg on August eleventh, two thousand twenty-five, at twelve o'clock PM in the Board of Supervisors' meeting room of the Goode Bank Building. The meeting was called to order by Chair Blackwell. Members present, Brenda Blackwell, Chair, Claudia Lundick, Sterling Wilkinson, Tom Tanner. Also present, Alex Gottschalk, Judy Sheffield, Alex Wells, and Jay Whitmore. Mr. Gottschalk and Mr. Wells reviewed the following information with the committee. The Mecklenburg County Information Technology Department, I T, currently consists of three full-time positions, one of which is vacant due to a recent retirement. These three positions must support all county activities and all, almost two hundred and fifty county full-time staff, from providing support for critical public safety communications devices and the county's financial and tax administration systems, to responding to cybersecurity threats, to implementing major replacement enhancements and upgrade projects in county agencies, to regular I T support, such as device installation and password management. Additionally, I T also has regular interaction with external agencies such as local police departments. With limited staffing, I T ends up devoting most of its regular working hours towards crisis management, which has hindered the progression and development of major projects and long-term initiatives. Based on an analysis produced by Prince William County in two thousand twenty-three, the ratio of I T to total county workforce appears to be two to three per every one hundred employees. For Mecklenburg, this ratio would equate to five to seven employees. With many county systems vulnerable to threats, both from age, lack of updates over the years, and third-party disruption pressures, the I T department must grow to meet these challenges. With expansion of the Goode Bank Building and an I T space set aside, the future public safety building, there will be enough room in county offices to house additional positions. In January, the county contracted with the Berkeley Group to produce an I T staffing analysis report. Berkeley assigned two staff members, the former I T directors from Florid County, South Carolina, and Louisa County, Virginia, to survey county I T practices, interview county staff, and write recommendations based on their onsite observations and their years of practical experience. With the reports in progress, the fiscal year two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six budget, adopted by the board, pays two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in reserve to implement findings upon delivery. The county received the report attached in July. This report includes numerous suggestions broken out over a multi-year period. The report called for three positions in the immediate and short-term recommendations. An administrative coordinator an administrative coordinator, tier-one tax support, a public safety support specialist, and a security specialist. However, the job functions of one of those three can be incorporated into the skillset the county is recruiting with the current vacant position. If additional public safety needs arise, this further position may be merited after the opening of the public safety building. Upon the motion, Ms. Lundie, the committee voted unanimously to authorize two additional positions for the I T department in fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six to be funded from the dedicated I T findings reserve. I will pause here for a moment before they turn over.
Okay. Everyone's heard the motion. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, say aye. Opposed, motion adjourned.
There being no further business, the meeting was adjourned.
Okay. Ms. Lundie, I think you're up next, Joint Education Committee.
Thank you. Joint Education Committee meeting. Um, calls are, by Mr. Glenn Edwards, committee member, roll call. Members present, Claudia Lundie, Chair, Mr. David Franklin, Board of Supervisors, Mr. Matt Edwards, and Mr. Dorfman, School Board. His friends are Blackwell and Mr. Mickey Allgood were absent. Also present were Mr. Andrew Hargrove, Board of Supervisors, Mr. Alex Gotchalk, County Administrator, Dr. Scott Warner, Superintendent, Mr. Brian Dalton, the Director of Consultants and Operations, his Robin Moore, Director of Food Services, his Emma Barber, Director of Learning, and his colleague, Gometo Curry. Adoption of the agenda. Your nominated motion is seconded by Mr. Brink to adopt the agenda. Information items, A, two thousand and twenty-five through two thousand and twenty-six. The school year opening update was given by Mr. Doctor Scott Warner. Doctor Warner provided an update from the start of the school year. On the first day of school, the students' count was one hundred students less than the previous year. I O, the official count will be on September thirtieth, when the division reports the total students' count to V D O E, part of education. The new rule began the prohibition of cell phones has caused a positive change in the culture at the school. Members asked questions about the requirement for parents to homeschool their children. Information item B, Palmfield Elementary School Project final update was given by Mr. Brian Dalton. Mr. Dalton provided an update on the closing of the Palmfield Elementary School Project. Contractors are laying sod on the area where grass has not rung, um, to reduce track and clay onto the sidewalks at the school. Additional sidewalks have been installed or A D A compliance. It is anticipated that the project will be closed by November or December. The new school received positive feedback from the community and student members. Information items, um, C, Chase City Elementary School, Mr. Brian Dalton. Chase City Elementary School Project is still in the early stages. A vestment of eight minutes is anticipated to take four to six weeks. This army plays in demolition is anticipated to start by mid-November. The school is scheduled to reopen in two thousand and twenty-seven. Issues that arose during the Palmfield project were corrected from the Chase City project. Chase City Elementary will have a different layout and more square footage based on the size of the project, incorporating areas of the old school into the build of the new school and maintaining the current fuel station. There will be two entries for the new school, one for the buses and the other for car drivers and driver. The current soccer field will remain as is. The Board of Supervisors will hold a cooperative committee meeting in October to discuss the land option or laycross elementary. Item number D, support of recruitment and retention. Doctor Warner, Mr. Dalton, and Mrs. Moore discussed the difficulty of hiring and maintaining staff to serve the buildings and student needs. But the division is using creative ways to help attract new employees by offering more ways to earn income, such as working as a bus driver and a food service employee and increasing the hourly rate. Training for bus drivers and food service workers is provided by the division. Salvar for a part-time employee is training over twelve months so that the employee receives a feedback every month. Members discussed additional benefits for part-time employees. Miss Barber provided information on the cost of providing health care versus offering a time benefit. Mr. Dalton provided a presentation addressing the future needs of the maintenance department, which addresses the need for pay scale adjustment and the added technical skill requirements to maintain and repair the system in the new buildings. Members also discussed use of the career and technical education offerings to help develop future employees for the division. Also acknowledged was the petition from other companies in the county hiring for the same skill needed in the school. Adjourned at four fifty-six P M. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Lundie. Mr. Harrow, Budget Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Harrow. Uh, the budget, the Mecklenburg County budget and finance committee met Monday, September eighth at five thirty P M. Those that were in attendance, Mr. Andrew Hargrove Chairman, David Brink, Mr. Wilkinson, Tom Tanner, Brenda Blackwell, Alex Gotchalk, County Administrator, Assistant County Administrator, Jimmy Sheffield, um, Mr. Claudia Lundie, Jim Dennis, and Mrs. Dennis. Budget and finance committee recommend to the Board of Supervisors that the Board adopt the following appropriation actions. Sixteen thousand, eight hundred and sixty-six dollars and two cents to Trail Public Wellness Fund, number one twenty-seven, fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. Thousand and fourteen dollars and nine cents appropriated to the Buck Library, uh, number one fifty-one, fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. Hundred and fifty-six dollars and fifty-four cents appropriated to the Brook of Burmud Library Fund, number one fifty-four, year twenty-four, twenty-five. Uh, three hundred and thirty-five thousand, nine hundred and fifteen dollars and fifty-five cents from the very fund balances hereby estimated in the Children's Service Act Fund, um, number two oh eight within fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five budget. Two hundred and forty-eight thousand, six hundred and twenty-six dollars and five cents for the Children's Service Fund, number two oh eight, in year twenty-four, twenty-five for budget for two years tuition expenses. Eight thousand, nine hundred and one dollars and fourteen cents for the Commonwealth Fund, two-third, number two thirty, fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five for the travel professional education expenses. Twenty-two thousand, five hundred and ninety-four dollars and seven cents, uh, through the underwater Commonwealth Fund, number two thirty-two, fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. And four thousand, three hundred and seventy-six dollars and seventy-four cents, Special Welfare Fund, number seven oh one, fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five budget for the welfare program. Uh, Mr. Chairman, our active members are motion to accept these appropriations.
Everyone, this heard the motion, Mr. Harrow. Put all the appropriations, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, the motion adjourned. Mr. Harrow. Jenny, you got to do this for all of us.
I have.
You have. Okay. Kind of a political comment and our first speaker?
The first speaker we have registered here tonight is Marika Goodwin.
And I would like to remind everybody of a three-minute time limit.
I'll do my best, I promise. My name is Marika Goodwin, family nurse practitioner at our local P A D S clinic, which is key on access to healthcare services. I sometimes find that people don't always understand what we do and the services that we offer. P A D S is an organization that provides healthcare to the underinsured, uninsured, commercially insured patients. We also provide services to Medicare and Medicaid patients. We are not affiliated with any other hospitals, association, or clinic. Uh, we do have multiple clinics across the state and Danville, Pennsylvania County, as well as Halifax County. Services that we offer, in addition to primary care, are dental care. We have medical assistance treatment for opioid addiction management. We offer hepatitis treatment. We offer neurology services. We have board-certified neurologist, Dr. Carlos Williams, who is in our office. Um, we offer obstetrics and gynecology services. We have board-certified pediatricians to provide care for children. We have psychiatry and behavioral health services that are shared amongst all of the offices. We have community health workers that help provide individuals that are in need of services such as helping find housing, um, getting onto Medicare and Medicaid or other services and helping so much with, um, helping them with food insecurities and things like that. So they have, they have a broad focus, uh, which is much needed in a rural community such as ours. We have school-based programs where we have, um, people, community workers that go into the schools and help with education and provide care. Right now, that's located specifically in our Pennsylvania County dental office. Each one of our offices has a pharmacy that's run as a three forty B pharmacy. Don't expect you to know what three forty B is, but it is a, um, does not require, we are not funded by federal funds for three forty B. We are a means-based or income-based facility. And what this allows us to do is provide medications to patients, sometimes very high-end medications, that are funded through an agreement with the pharmaceutical companies, uh, to help provide those medications at a reduced cost. We also have a medical assistance program that again is also based on income that we work with the pharmaceutical companies, the patient needs, the income requirements, they will provide these patient medications for a year. And we're talking about some very expensive medications that are newer medications that otherwise could not be affordable. Um, the mobile unit provides dental and primary care within a limited area. We have offices in Boynton, South Austin, Danville, Chatham, and Martinsville. We offer stay-in-day appointments in our Boynton clinic. Um, we also have extended office hours. On Tuesdays and Wednesday evenings, we keep the clinic open. Am I running out of time?
I think you're timed.
On Tuesdays and Wednesday evenings, we do keep the clinic open until eight o'clock in the evening. And if anyone has any more questions, um, here is some information that I'll share with you, and you're more than welcome to reach out to us at the clinic and we'll provide you with any information we can. Thank you.
Yes, we have two other people signed up. Uh, the next person is Ann Miller.
I'm speaking for the residents and myself. We have Chantel as our cable provider. The only problem, which is very serious, we have no Virginia channels. This is the state of Virginia. We have no Virginia channels. I have tried other avenues and the way that I can have talked to Chantel, other people have talked to Chantel. Now I'm asking for your help. If we were to be evacuated or some emergency, we would have no way of knowing that there is an emergency. So I'm here asking for your help to maybe speak to Chantel, just let them see how important it is that we have Virginia channels. We have a governor's race this year. I don't know what happened yesterday or last week. This is very, very important and other news that we need in the, in the state of Virginia. So, um, I, so that's, this is why I'm here asking for your help as the Board of Supervisors to try to, to help, excuse me, help the citizens of Clarksville get a Virginia channel so we can get Virginia news where we live. And I have some, um, may I approach? This is unrelated.
Okay.
Thank you so very much. Sir.
I'll see if the say up ends up.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Board.
Thank you.
And the third speaker we have is Patty.
Mm-hmm. Good evening. This was something impromptu since the superintendent this year. In two thousand and twenty, the Virginia House and Senate passed a resolution, two thirty-two, it was signed into law, that schools are supposed to provide feminine hygiene products for their students. It's come to my attention that neither the middle school nor the high school have these products in the girls' bathroom. Um, I don't know how we enforce. I have called Tommy Wright to find out if there were any teeth in the legislation or if the Virginia legislature funded this bill. I've not heard back from him. Um, granted, they are not in office, but I wanted the Board to follow up because we have young women not getting what they need for sanitary protection while at school and for the lower-income students accessing these goods at all is a very high bar for them. And that is all. Thank you.
Thank you.
So the first item we have here is an introduction. Um, many of you had the opportunity a little while ago to meet Margaret Peoples. Margaret, say hello.
Hello.
Um, Margaret is our new employee relations consultant. Um, she's going to be a big assistance to Judy and I as we endeavor to recruit new positions, onboard people, and, um, deal with all the items that go on in a workplace, um, from great milestones to tougher situations. But we're really excited to have Margaret with us, um, and to be able to, uh, have this physician join our team and assist our efforts. Um, so we wanted to welcome her and I'm sure you all have a lot of great conversations with her in the time to come.
Yes, thank you.
We absolutely would certainly welcome you to Mecklenburg County.
Thank you.
To follow the work we do with you and feel free to reach out to all members and express anything you'd like to express.
Yes, sir. Thank you so much. Thank you, Alex. Thank you to the Board. Thank you to the members of Mecklenburg County. I look forward to contributing to strengthening the workforce and I'm going to do the best of my ability. So, thank you.
So, you're welcome.
And while we're shouting people out, I do believe we have a certain champion in the room with us sitting in as well. So, congratulations on the mirror gold winner. He's had too high of a bar, too high of a standard, too high of expectations for some other people who may have to participate in doing so.
You've got two years to get ready. Will you work one? Can it find me? Did he get back to work? He does?
He's here.
Okay. No research, Barbie's monitoring.
All right. So, the, uh, other big item we have for you is I wanted to provide an update on the public safety building. Um, we've been progressing, uh, pretty well on this facility. We had a meeting on Thursday of last week with updated, um, design for the public safety building, which I have. These are large paper documents where I'm going to pass around, but just wanted to, um, mention as I'm passing them around what we've got. So this one is going to be the, um, exterior rendering. Um, this is actually an elevation drawing, but it serves this purpose. So that will show the exterior sides and, um, front and back of the building. And then we have here, uh, the And then we have here the current floor plan for the first floor, the second floor, and the auxiliary building. Just as a reminder, the project itself is a two-story building. It's going to be about 50,000 square feet at this point for floors one and two, and then additional auxiliary building in the back, which is going to be about 5,000 square feet. And that's mostly for parking, for bigger vehicles like the boat that the dive team uses. But that, these have a bunch of, good information about what we're envisioning from a room allocation perspective. But in terms of a project schedule update, which is really what I wanted to bring forth in a busy evening. So with the conclusion of the design development stage, we are now progressing into the construction documents drafting stage. So this is the final step. So pretty much what we've been, to date, is we went from the floor plan to fleshing out what the interior of the building will look like. And now the construction documents phase will write up all of the specs, all of the interior mechanical equipment, plumbing, size of the doors, all kinds of details that the contractors will need in order to fit appropriately on the project. And so that is anticipated to take about the rest of this year, the main quarter of this year. And so in December, we should have construction administration documents. At that point, we will be bringing them for the review of our building official to make sure that everything looks good to go before we go out to bid and up to code. And so we're currently anticipating the bidding process that will commence right around February of 2026. And we're hoping with the size of this project that we should have a good playing field. We're hoping for, so like when we built the wing, the Goobank building that we're occupying at the moment, we had two bidders, but this is a substantially larger project. So we're hoping that with the greater volume of work involved in this, we're going to be able to secure a little bit more competition for the development of this building. So I would anticipate maybe as soon as March or potentially April of 2026 that the contract for construction will be in front of you all to consider and approve, which would mean if awarded, we'll have a notice to proceed that would be a couple of weeks after that. So I would imagine the earthwork for site work would begin probably around the April-May timeframe of 2026. There's going to be some substantial site work involved. There's a lot of earth on the site that will have to be reallocated there. But nevertheless, you'll start seeing construction activity in the middle of next year. And then I would guess that probably towards the late summer, you'll start actually seeing some serious construction, like the footings and, and structure should be rising by the end of next year. Now it's going to be, I would imagine, 18, 24-month construction timeframe, but we're going to start seeing, you know, the evidence of that project coming to fruition here shortly. So that's really exciting. I know the occupants of that building are looking forward to getting underway and getting in ultimately at the end of the road. But that's going to be a transformational impact here to Menclenberg County and to our facilities in Boynton. So we have that to look forward to. The, I'm very pleased right now with what we've seen so far from the detail that has been thought of, provided. And it's, it's pretty clear that, you know, the team that we've got, the architectural team, has designed these and worked on these a lot of other places. So they're bringing a lot of the best practices in the field to our facility, which is always welcome. So we'll be, that's going to be a fantastic ribbon cutting when it comes. And I'm sure a lot of people in our region will be quite envious and looking forward to seeing what we've, what we've gotten there. So we, that's the update on that one. And we thank you, Andy Harrow, for pushing us towards this building.
So does that mean I have to run alternative negotiations?
Yes.
Who said that?
I do. We'll, we'll put that in the construction documents that we're signing. All, all work will be immediately suspended until and unless. So that's, that's it for that item unless anyone has any questions about the Pub Safety Building. If not, we have our staff reports for you. I do want to point out that we have the first edition of the Economic Development Report that is in that packet. So hopefully that will provide you all with additional insight into what's going on here in the landscape of Menclenberg County. And that is what I have for you this evening.
All right. Move your hands along. We have a motion to approve the set calendar.
Set one of this calendar.
All the paper motions say a. Those opposed, the motion carries. All right. With London, I believe I promised you the latest meeting. We have to go first. So I yield the floor to you.
I'm so pleased that the school started up on a good year this year. And if you pay the teacher, we would have a school, we're going to have a product if they're showing the system, we pay them. I think you're getting pretty good the last nine, six and a half percent, but you can do better. If you get quality teachers, then we're going to have good schools. And we're going to have even better students, and our product will get even better. Me now, you know, beautiful town at the corner of the intersection, 16th and Bridge Road, where there's an accident thrown, going to four-wheel bridge, they cut down a tree, it's so beautiful. I can't thank you enough to keep my area on rubble base. I saw also that we have a large number of parents that want to have their children homeschool. Maybe I can want to contribute that in a few minutes, some other time later. I want to know what's their reason, if they hear reason, why, don't answer that, you can talk about it later on another time. A beautiful school we have with all the limitations that we have in it, but they want to homeschool their children? I just can't, you know.
It's, it's a national trend. It's a national and general trend.
Okay, that's all I know then.
Okay.
All right. Well, I'd just like to congratulate the young lady on winning the I vote sticker contest. That's a mighty big achievement for such a young lady. Like Tammy was saying, I'm very proud of her. Also want to thank the county employees for the services that they provide. Many of the services that, that we, that we enjoy in the county, I think sometimes we kind of take it for granted. And things don't just happen. There's people, you know, behind the scenes that, that'll take care of business, so to speak. And so I just want to thank the county employees for the services that they provide. That's it.
Congratulations to Mia, Mia on her recognition for the I vote sticker. I'm going to make all his will.
Thank you. I also like to congratulate Mia. You know, it's a great job, but I just think it's important to engage your people. You know, the voting process, sometimes it might be sort of a very hard right to the head and it's kind of a little, like, exercise on chat. You know, just things that, and then welcome to this stage, Black Edge. I guess the last thing is, you know, Thursday of this week is now eleven. You know, sometimes, like, we get things added. Interesting, a number, all lost that day, employees. This is then, that's all it.
Thank you, Mr. Brink. First, I'm glad to see that the addition to the new building is almost finished. What I've seen is a really nice building. As I said, getting moved in now, and they said everything is working out well. Welcome to this people. Thank you for joining us. We'll keep you busy, kind of true. And Mia on that moving sticker, I mean, that's just amazing to have a young person like that engaged and to do that. And I hope everybody in the county is up for the sticker, but it's open. That's a really, really good thing. As we've seen from this particular board's report about the IT issues that we can have, I'm glad to see that we invested in some more IT personnel, as, as we call them, IT Alex and regular Alex. IT Alex stays very busy. We need to use the help. Thank you for all you do and love if you keep our computers working, it would be good. Also, as far as the run of the service authority does update on that, we're about ninety-eight percent finished with the expansion of the water treatment plant. They should be wrapping up everything in the next few weeks and hopefully we have a room announcement of a big rear ceiling. And just the convenience center embracing the law. You know, I just reminded everybody that we're having to move to these things across the county. But if you have trash, take it to the appropriate locations. Our employees with the county, a face or David faces when they show up and it's trash sitting outside the dumpsters and the dumpsters empty. At least have the courtesy, you know, to throw your trash in the dumpsters. And if you have washing machines, any type of stuff like that, we have convenience centers open there where we can pack all this stuff too. So please be considerate of our efforts. And again, I'd like to congratulate Justin. Jason, I think, left. He participated in it also, but Justin brought home the crystal ball. Anybody like to go by his office? I think he has it sitting in the window.
Did he take it from his phone?
She actually gave it to him. He said he got a prominent place to display it, so they may be sharing it. But their community involvement was amazing. And the, the children from the Bailey Center participated in it also. They put on amazing performance also. And so just thank you for being involved in the community and noted anybody that eats dicks lessons that people have been out. He's also good at art crafts and things like that.
Still win the reserve parking lot.
It's great. You know, I'd like to congratulate the old ladies for her award, what she did. Shows the talent we have in our schools and stuff. You know, I think back at our education being, they were talking about, you know, the new buildings and the things we are doing. We're talking about hiring IT people. The young people have a lot of opportunities within this county to, to get some very good jobs and stuff like that, you know. And we're going to need those kids. So I, you know, I hope that keeps the rest of the, things are changing. You know, like Dr. Wong said, the old hammer and the pipe rings don't fix stuff because we won't be able to be added IT people to eat fast and stuff like that. And that's all.
That's all, bro. Mr. Brink, when I met someone, I think last week or before last, Mr. Spencer, I think this is direct to you. Are there any trades that are taught when people go to prison so that they can come back and go to work instead of doing other stuff, going back to prison? Is anything that can be formulated or contracted or something that they, that puts it to the point that they can look for work when they get out?
Yes, sir. I can speak to that. In some cases, it's a sad state of affairs, if you ask. But to answer your question about trades, yes, there's, there's programming, treatment programs and that type of thing. And I'll share with Frank that the, the latest program that's been placed now for product about ten years, whenever it would have gone, but it was called reentry. If a guy gets quite a bit of programming, different kinds of programs that they need, you know, it's kind of individual. Some guys might need substance abuse programs. Other guys might have other kinds of issues that they, that they need counseling and all the programs. But they have opportunities to participate, as you mentioned, in trades and that type of thing. So if, if an individual takes advantage of those things, it can help prepare them for that reentry, what they call back into society. Many people take advantage of them, programs or trades, it's very beneficial to them. There's also policies and practices in place where guys can shorten their time. It's called good conduct hours. So there's many opportunities like that for the guys. They have to take the initiative to participate in those programs. So when I say it's a sad state of affairs, what I mean is my experience has been one where if a person goes in and applies themselves, then they can have many opportunities. And they seem to be much more successful when they come home. It's some individuals that just will not apply themselves. And they, they end up not earning good conduct time, which can shorten their sentence and allow them to come home soon. So for those individuals, they end up doing what we call backing out. They end up doing all of it now. And much of it is, is of behaviorally. And so when I say it's a sad state of affairs, it's, it's a good thing that we have somewhere, you know, to have people be placed where they're not a threat to the community. Because if they're in a mindset that I do what I want to do, when I want to do it, and how I want to do it, nobody's going to tell me what to do, then those people need to be locked up. But again, as far as once they get home, you know, the, the, the state, you know, the Department of Corrections and so forth, they do their programs to prepare guys and provide them opportunities before they leave. But it's really up to the individual to utilize and take advantage of those programs and/or to continue to be productive once they already.
So you convey this information, you're going to back to this Janice?
I could, if you want.
Yeah, I mean, I, I would want to, so we do need to talk with the group so that gives us some, some direction.
And I did share also, Mr. Brink, that this, these programs, many of them are church-related. There are some programs in, in our community, in Menclenberg County, where there are people who have past experiences and, and I'm happy to say some, in some of those cases, they're successful. So I don't want to call names, but we have an individual who, who finds crisis while he's locked up and then he able to come home and, and go seminary and then have a productive church with, you know, with a, with a, a good congregation of people. And many of those people have substance abuse related issues related to that nature. And this pastor had walked that path, but he turned the corner and made a conscious decision that I don't want to live that life anymore. And remains a pastor and provides services to, to citizens who he can relate to. So we do have programs like that in the county.
But have you, can you relay the information to us on when we go back? And also, Mr. Wong, if you could just look into that feminine hygiene thing.
Already did.
Oh, you have?
Already taken, already taken care of it.
Great.
We, we've got him, it's just.
And welcome, Miss People. We're glad to have you. The only thing that I can say that if Mr. Brink will knock on your door, don't.
No, dear. No, go ahead. Well, that's, thank you, Mr. Harrow. I, I, you know, completely agree with everything everybody said. Yeah, I don't want to be a con, you know, all the things y'all said, you covet everybody and all that. Or we'll say, Justin, you know, you, you're definitely a personality in the community. I guess the personality is F County right now, so good to you.
It was a great thing. We raised right at $20,000.
Yeah, one, that's three of the wonderful. That was kind of, one thing I wanted to bring up, when we, in our budget cycle last year, that's such a need in this community and that Bailey Center does such good work, we need to consider some type of funding for that if we can, Alex.
Yeah, we can recapture them. I mean, they have not yet submitted a request to us at any time.
Yeah.
But we can certainly find out what their needs are.
Absolutely. We have plenty of time to do that, as much as life is concerned. Anyway, that's all. Can you wait? That's all I have. Anybody else have any?
Great. You know, if you're being out of luck, it's like, and there's a lot of applications.
Okay. How many times have you overlooked? What, who are real committed?
Mr. Brink, in this market?
I'm still over there.
I can't really follow. All right, that's all we have. Stand your ground.